President.
Mayor Rennie.
Present. You always wait for you to tell me officially we have a quorum. Thank you. Thank you, Lord. Call to order. Commissioner Lucas, would you let us in our prayer and pledge, please?
Please stand.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you bless us as we make decisions to better this community. God be with our community. Bless fairview. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye. Public hearings, there are none. Citizen comments?
There are none tonight.
Thank you. Public announcements, awards and recognitions, Mr. Ross?
Good evening. Just a reminder that this weekend, we are having the fishing rodeo at Veterans Park. It starts at 7:00 a.m. until noon. There's gonna be door prizes along with lunch provided. And just reminder, if you are out fishing at any of the, at the lakes, please pick up all your trash and to pick up all the fishing line as well. Then also, June the 4th, which is this Saturday, we're starting our summer movie series at Bowie Park. That starts at 8:00 p.m. and there will be concessions available as well. Thank you.
And what's the movie?
The movie is Ratatouille.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board?
I got one. When you said it starts at eight, is that what time the movie starts? Does the, do, is there anything going on before that or?
The movie starts at 8:00 p.m. and there's nothing that's going on prior to that.
Okay.
Mayor, I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
What is the age group that we're looking at for the fishing rodeo?
All the way, technically, all the way up to the age of 17.
Okay. Thanks.
Item A, staff comments and monthly reports. Are you gonna be everyone?
Yes, Mayor, and I'll be brief with these. On the planning report, for the month of May, we had 21 single-family building permits and nine other building permits. You may recall that other building permits are not necessarily new construction. That could be a remodel in addition, that sort of thing. So, we typically classify those by single-family, multifamily, commercial, or other. So, the other's gonna be something that's not a new structure.
I can't hear you.
Is that any better?
That's much better. Thank you.
But a relatively quiet month for planning. On the permit side, on the project side, we continue to be busy, as busy as we've ever been, with projects coming through the door. The staff in planning and engineering stays pretty busy. That's a good thing for us. And we have no doubt that the building permit activity will increase as these projects move forward in the process. That's all I have.
Any questions from the planning commission report? Okay. Finance report?
Yes, Mayor. Finance report. Placed in front of each of you tonight, our cash balances that we hold in all of our banking accounts, those cash balances are as of today. We continue to be over our cash balances from the previous year, which is good. We understood we would be there. Additionally, not included on this document, I can report to you that our reserve fund, you may recall, at your last report, we were at $1 million in the city's reserve fund. In addition to the financial information you see in front of you, we also have completed the transfer of $250,000 additional dollars to the reserve fund, which puts us at $1,252,000. As a part of the financial plan that was approved in 2020, we were going to increase our reserves from 10% of our operating account budget to 20% of our operating account budget over 10 years, increase that 1% a year. I can report to you tonight that our reserve fund is fully funded through fiscal year 2025 at this point. So, our effort in that is to make sure that we get that reserve fund fully funded as quickly as we can so that all of our operations can be solved and we know we're secure in those reserves. So, that's all good news for us. That's a credit to everyone who's been a part of helping us get to that point. But that's a really nice reporting, a financial position for us to be.
So, we're three years ahead?
We're four years ahead.
Okay.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-two if you count this year. So, we're four fiscal years ahead of our, of our reserve fund. And that's all I have for you on the finance reports.
Any questions on the finance report?
Just one. The, the 2021B, when does that have to be spent again?
Typically, it's three years from the receipt of funds. So, those dollars will need to be dispersed by January of 2020, 2025.
Okay. And the, that fund is going towards Stormwater?
No, that's going toward, that's going toward all of our road, infrastructure, all of that work. The Stormwater comes from the capital fund, has a balance of $1,206. You may recall that during the budget discussions, the capital fund is gonna become the Stormwater Fund, the ARP Stormwater Fund. So, all, there'll be an additional $1,247,000 that should hit that account in July or August, depending on when it's released by the federal government. That entire balance will be allocated to Stormwater. It doesn't have to be spent by December 31, 2025, but it does have to be allocated by December 31, 2025. So, we'll have the capital plan for that. We have already have on the city's website a bid for some work to be done with those funds. So, we've kind of not delayed in that. Once those funds hit the bank and we were secure, we've moved forward. We also have already completed our annual report for the year. We're required to complete one annual report to the federal government for those funds. That work has been completed as well. We won't have to report that until next year. As soon as we get the capital plan adjusted, and Kevin's working on that information now with all of the projects, as soon as we get that list out, we'll get that to the board for full approval and start bidding those projects as well, as well. My expectation for that is that you will see those bids hit the website and be active in October with the expectation that we would award contracts in January of 2023 and use 2023 calendar year as our construction year for the most that we can.
Thank you. Any other questions? Public Works, Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the commission, just one item for you, or two. You may recall that we added one equipment operator position to the public court department. That employee has been on board now for about two months. That's afforded us the opportunity to have two full crews working. That's great for us. So, that, that has really helped us out. The addition of one person really doubled our ability to get work done. So, we're excited about that. In addition to that, in this year's budget, which the purchase will likely not be made until after July 1, but we have approved in this year's budget a piece of equipment that will allow us to work almost exclusively on storm drain, storm drainage areas. Fairview just hasn't had that in the past. That, we're buying that on state bid. It's anticipated to be delivered to us within 90 days. Our equipment operator will primarily work on that piece of equipment and they will work in concert with the Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan for items that we don't bid out. So, Public Works is kind of exceeding our expectations with the addition of one employee, and that's been great for us. And then lastly, just as a reminder, we are running the chipper service right now. So, we encourage people to check the website. I know that during the year, when people leave debris, brush, that sort of thing out, it can get out and get collected, or it can remain for some period of time and not be collected. We do make every effort to pick up everything that was within our guidelines or near that. But we do encourage people to reach out to the city's website, and there's a full description of what we can pick up, size of pile, diameter of materials, that sort of thing. So... And then lastly, Mayor, under city manager report, just as a reminder that tonight, you have on the agenda, the second reading of the city's budget for the fiscal year that begins July 1. We are required by the state to have our budget adopted by June 30 of every year. We then have 45 days from the date of adoption to submit all of our budget paperwork to the state. As we sit here tonight, the, if the budget's passed tonight, and I assume that it will be, we will submit that report to the state in two weeks, and we'll be about a month ahead of schedule on that. The purpose for that is, the sooner we get our report back that is approved, the sooner we can get back into some of the capital purchases and some of the operational additions that we talked about, as an example. We talked about adding a position in the park, programmer. Once we get budget approval on all those things, we'll move back out with that job description to get those done. So... That's all I have for tonight on those, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item nine, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye. Item 10, old business, A, zoning O-Nashville Road, Pinkerton. We will now open the public hearing for that item. So, is there anyone here to speak on old business, A? Okay. We will close the public hearing. Old Business, A, two. Vice Mayor?
Second and final reading of ordinance 2022-16, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 7.19 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, parcel 065.07, located on Old Nashville Road from RS40 residential to R20 residential. Property owner, Janelle Pinkerton, agent Timothy Mangram, Innovative Construction Company, LLC. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any questions of the, Mr. Mangram?
Mayor, I've got a question. So, back in that area at the, I don't know if that's the north, at the top of the, the diagram there, is there a little bit of that property that is unusable to build on? Can you give us just a description of that property?
There is. The one that's highlighted currently, there is a pretty good portion of the back half of that. I won't say from where that white line crosses it, it's a little further back than that. It's, it's got some floodway there, and the topography coming off 100 is really steep there as well. So, there's approximately an acre of this, seven acres, that will remain the way it is today.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye. 10B, zoning O-Nashville Road, Zoot. We'll open the public hearing now. Is there anyone here to speak on that piece of property rezoned? We will now close the public hearing. Vice Mayor, item B2?
Second and final reading of ordinance 2022-17, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 7.19 acres of property consisting of Williamson Tax Map 042, parcel 065.08, located on Old Nashville Road from RS40 residential to R20 residential. Property owner, estate of Charlene Zoit, agent Timothy Mangram, Innovative Construction Company, LLC. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Any questions of Mr. Mangram?
Mr. Dawson, this is pretty much the same scenario. This, there's a big box culvert that crosses under the Highway 100 that comes off of this lot. So, there's about an acre of this, seven acres. It's gonna be unbuildable as well.
Is there any other discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye. Item 10C, zoning Highway 96 North, Neighbors. We'll open the public hearing on that item. Is there anyone here to speak on that? If you'll tell us your name and your address, please.
My name is Helen Day. I live at 7215 Lake Road, which is right next to this property, and I really am objecting to the fact that they want to put dense housing behind me. That's what I'm reading from the thing. I don't understand all of it, that it wants to go from individual housing to like apartment complexes or retirement houses. And they're gonna take away all the habitat that there is behind my house. They've already taken a lot over, away. The animals have disappeared and so have the birds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak on this?
I'm Angie Short. I'm the leasing agent for the property. I'm here with the owner, Mr. Neighbors. We, of course, would like to see this property move forward since it is sitting on Highway 96 and there is some other industry on Highway 96. So, we would definitely appreciate the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll tell us your name and your address, please.
My name is Leslie Street and it's 1062 Highway 96 North. This right here, I would like to know the zoning around this section because I noticed that the agent likes to say, well, this is what's around it. It's gonna, the zoning is going with what's located around the property. But these properties on Lake Road, if I'm not mistaken, are pretty large lots. And so, anything that you do that's, you know, below RS, or excuse me, R20 is not gonna fit the local area. Everything on the other side of it might because it's what he keeps getting zoned. And that's not right because you're, he's taking over the rules of Fairview. So, please consider that when you think about this because there's a lot of country right there and you're taking it away, and that's what people move here for. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this? Then we will close the public hearing. Vice Mayor?
Second and final reading of ordinance 2022-18, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 6.86 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022, parcel 178.02, located on Highway 96 North from RSM-40 residential to RM8 residential multifamily. Property owner, Rick Neighbors, agent Timothy Mangram, Innovative Construction Company, LLC. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. So, this question is for Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, can you explain RSM40?
Yes, sir. In, in just brief terms, RSM40 is residential, single-family, or mobile home.
How many mobile homes would they be able to put on this property?
I believe that's one per acre. The acreage still stays the same, the requirement for the 40,000 square feet, but you could install a mobile home on that 40,000 square feet if it's so zoned.
Okay. So, Tuesday, I was able to, to go around and meet with many of the property owners on Lake Road and Highway 96. And I asked the property owners, at first I introduced myself and told them that I was a commissioner, and we were able to discuss, and I basically told the, the property owners three things. We have a property that is, that is up for rezoning. The property is zoned for trailers. I then told the, the property owners that the 2040 comprehensive plan calls for something other than what the developer would like to see. The developer would like to see condos and specifically condominiums instead of, of, of what it currently is. So, we had this conversation, and I spoke with 20 individuals, 20 separate homeowners in the area down 96 and, and on Lake Road. And there were two things that certainly came up during those conversations. The first thing that 19 of the 20 said, first, I do not want to see trailers on that property. The second thing was, I don't want to see income-based housing. If they are gonna be condominiums, I want to make sure that they look nice. They're aesthetically nice. They're not income-based. I, I share the, the same feeling about this property. Currently, today, it is zoned where someone could put trailers on that, that property. Whether this developer, if we do not pass it, states he's gonna do it, whether he sells it off, whatever, current day, zoning for that property, they could put trailers on that property. That's what it's zoned for. So, I asked those homeowners, those 20 homeowners, what do you think? And I want your opinion. Specifically, I want your opinion. And those homeowners, once again, said, I don't want to see trailers and I don't want to see income-based specifically for that area. So, for what it's worth, it was wonderful to get out in the community and, and talk with the constituents and get that input, just what, under these circumstances, and these are not perfect circumstances either. This is legacy zoning that we've had on the books for a long time here in the city of Fairview. It's not part of our comprehensive plan, what we want for the future. However, that legacy zoning is not what we wanted either for current day. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board, Mayor? Yes.
Commissioner Dawson, I'd like to say that I appreciate that you took the time to go out and find out what the neighbors in that area would like to see because that's important that we, you know, get the feel for what, you know, how they would like to see it move forward. So, I just appreciate that you did that.
Are there any other comments from the board?
Mayor, I did want to ask the developer, did, I believe that during the first reading, I asked you specifically to go out and to talk with the homeowners in the area as well. Did you get a chance to go out and discuss?
I did. I spoke to several that's, that's right in that area. And they were all pretty much like the 19 you said, that, you know, they, they didn't want to see a mobile home park. If, if possible, they'd rather have the condos if, if they were picking one of those two. I did have a couple said, you know, it's on 96. That's a main thoroughfare. That's where you should want your density anyway, in some of them's opinion. So... I didn't get, I didn't get one negative comment other than they didn't want the mobile homes.
And to be fair, I did have one person that was absolutely no. They, they said that they would, they would rather us stick with a comprehensive plan, for sure. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any other comments from the board? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing none. More discussion. Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Item D, budget fiscal year 2023. We will open the public hearing on the budget. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Vice Mayor, if you'd read the ordinance, please?
Second and final reading of ordinance 2022-23, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye. Item 11A, new business playground grand opening discussion. Commissioner Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, due to some supply chain issues that we've had, it looks like we're gonna have to push the soft opening of the playground back a little bit. My understanding that we were supposed to have that soft opening like today, this week, somewhere around there. Everybody knows how the supply chain, whatever it is, whether it's diapers, formula, we're having issues. It looks like everything should be here now, and hopefully, we're gonna be working on that playground to get that playground installed just as soon as possible. What I would like to suggest, so we have enough time for a really, really nice grand opening, is postponing that grand opening a little bit, keeping the soft opening so when the playground structure is actually built, allowing the community to come play on it. But postponing that grand opening so we can have a wonderful grand opening and also celebrate with everybody that was so instrumental in providing funds and everything else for the playground. For that grand, for that grand opening, my thought is to, to have the playground complete, to have the donor wall up, to have the picket fence completed, to have the sidewalk done, everything completely done. So, when we have that grand opening, it, it's, it's complete in its fullness. And we can have those donors there and thank them and have all of those folks that, that we would like to have there. Some other things that we were thinking about doing, we actually met with the POPSE Committee, the Park Operational Plan Committee, and the friends of Bowie Nature Park met. We were thinking of having a community workday to try to beautify the park before that grand opening. And if we had the grand opening on July 2, we're pushing up against a timeframe. So, our thought would be, at least my thought would be, is to push the grand opening, once again, not the soft opening, but the grand opening till September 10. September 10 is actually Nature Fest. Have that day on September 10, and then in correlation or in coordination with Nature Fest, have the grand opening where we can have everybody come and celebrate with us for that grand opening.
The end.
Still, still having the soft opening as soon as the structure is up, where, where kids can come play on it.
I have some questions.
Yes.
Mr. Collins, I thought our last update, everything was on schedule for the ribbon cutting on July 2. Is that not, what are we short in the supply chain?
So, Mayor, as I've described multiple times in these meetings, work sessions, and in email, the equipment is set to be installed prior to June, July 2. A couple of things we're working on with that is identifying specifically the footprint of the playground so we'll be able to understand fully and completely the border, location of sidewall, location and proper installation of fencing, things of that nature. So, none of, none of that's changed. As I've stated before, those, those things are underway. Part of that's a little out of our control. But our focus is to make sure that the playground is proper. So, with those things, once we get the construction, a crew on site and are able to identify what their footprint is, what the border's gonna be, all of those things, then we'll be able to move forward fairly quickly with that. then we'll be able to move forward fairly quickly with that. I did have a, a communication with the superintendent in charge of the playground installation last week. And he assures me in this email that the playground will be fully installed and ready to be played on by July 2nd.
Okay. And also, so nothing has changed, supply chain-wise, than what we've discussed at every board meeting when we've got an update? Everything's still the same?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay. And then, Mr. Ross, do I understand that it's not going to be a Nature Fest this year?
Yeah, Mayor, I can answer that. We were, um, we were notified in person last week, I believe, that the Fairview Chamber of Commerce has disbanded. It's no longer an, an agency in the city. And as you're aware, they were the agency that had coordinated Nature Fest. So given that, that we've gotten that information short notice, as we have, the city doesn't have the ability to, to, to prepare that event. As soon as we get through July 2nd, as soon as we get through July 3rd, you've seen the activities scheduled that we have throughout the summer and fall. And we'll be moving pretty deep into the Christmas parade that the city has taken on this year. So the ability for the city to take on Nature Fest, as, as it has been known in the past, we just don't have the capacity to do, we're just not given the notice or the, the ability to suitably plan for that.
And so as I understand it, everything is still on track. As we've discussed since last year, when we decided what the ribbon cutting was going to be, everything is still on track for July 2nd.
Again, as I've expressed, the playground will be installed by July 2nd, as described by the installer. As I've also expressed, as a part of that installation, we have to have information at installation time regarding the proper installation and identification of the fence, proper location and construction of the sidewalks, proper location and installation of the signage. Those three things may not be complete, as I have expressed multiple times, as we go through the process. So as soon as we can get that construction group on site, we'll be able to move forward with those. I don't think there's going to be an issue with sidewalk. I think that's the easiest component. The other component with, with the signage and the fencing, obviously, those two components have to go together. Once we understand what it will take place to install the fencing and we put that out for bid, we'll have to make a decision as to whether we bid. The fencing is, as a product and separately bid the installation, we have to determine if we bid the entire fencing installation as one, as one product, depending on what we have on the ground. So there are some logistics to putting that together. And I apologize, that's just the, the nature of where we are.
Okay. I did talk to Mr. McCoy today, who is the chairman of the Parks and Landscaping Board. And he is good and has understood the entire time about what the plan was for the donor wall. And as chairman, he is good to go with the scheduled July 2nd ribbon cutting. So just wanted to let you know that.
Mayor, what is, what is your understanding of the donor wall being ready July 2nd?
The donor wall will not be ready July 2nd. And I think we've been told that pretty much every update. So the donor wall, I believe there's a planned event later to unveil the donor wall and invite everyone back for that event. Mr. Collins, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. The discussions had been to have the playground open on that, on July 2nd, for that event as part of the July 3rd weekend. And then have a subsequent event that will be more formal donor recognition. Not that we wouldn't identify them at the grand opening. Obviously, there would be acknowledgement, notification of all that took place with that. Similar to we would if everything was installed permanently, we would just have to accept that the permanent items are there. Now, once they do get there, we would have the formal dedication of, of the permanent items. So the process would be the same, as far as the identification, that sort of thing, the program. We just wouldn't have the final components installed.
Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Uh huh.
As far as myself, I agree with Commissioner Butler. I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dawson. This is one of the largest projects that Fairview has done in the history of Fairview. I want it to be complete. I want us to have the soft opening. When it's ready to happen is fine. As far as a grand opening, I just, I, I don't feel comfortable doing a big grand opening when it's just partially complete. We don't have our donor wall, we don't have the fence. You know, we're speculating that it's going to be completely done in one month. That's, I mean, that may not happen. So I just feel like we need to push it further out. Whether there's a Nature Fest or not, we need to push it further out, possibly September, so that we give it time for everything to be complete. With all of the people who have been involved in this project, hardworking blood, sweat, and tears that have gone into this project, it needs to be a big event that we can honor everyone who has had anything to do with this project and not a partially finished situation where, you know, I don't feel like it's a good time to have that done. So I'm, I'm in favor of moving it to a later date.
Mayor, if I could, my
Yes, sir.
Three and a half cents here. Having just kind of heard about this today. It would've been nice if we'd have known about this prior, to having to make a decision on the fly tonight. Or worse, reading it on Facebook. However, that said, the staff has worked ridiculously hard on a timeline that this board gave them months ago, that has been talked about for months. And I don't, I don't see any reason to, to change that now here that we're in the 11th hour. So I, I say we go ahead with the plan as normal. I don't think it changes anything. Kids want to play on the playground, let's let them play on the playground. And I realize that what they're asking doesn't necessarily change that. But we, we have a timeline in place. I say we stick to it and move forward with the plan as originally intended.
Just one last thing, Mayor. So the 11th hour, we still have a month away from July 2nd. We can make this something huge, this grand opening, having our donors there, having everything done, having our pickets there, having the community there for a grand opening, with them looking at the picket they purchased. We can have time to do this right, or we can be pushed for time. And you're exactly right, the, the city employees have done a great job getting this ready for us. This grand opening deserves every bit of our attention and it should be simply amazing. And we should have the very best, we should not be pushed for time. I just feel like we're being pushed for time. And, and I would like to postpone it.
Mayor, one last thing. I just find it interesting that we're one month away from this thing. And now all of a sudden, we're pushed for time when we've been talking about this for months in workshops. And, and now all of a sudden, we're pushed for time. And, and pushed for time in such a way that, as a commissioner, I'm just now hearing about this today.
One last question. When was our soft opening supposed to be?
Commissioner Dawson, there wasn't a scheduled soft opening. The soft opening was simply going to be when the installation of the playground was complete.
Okay. Just whenever. I thought we had a specific date for a soft opening.
I heard the soft opening in May, so that's, that hasn't happened?
No, the discussions specifically were that, um, once the playground was complete, the installation of it was complete, that we simply would not announce the installation of complete. We would just have the playground open. The anticipation at that time was that the playground installation would take place sometime in mid to late May. That's how the May date came about. There was never a specific date, specific time, or specific other instruction other than, uh, we want to have kids play on the playground as soon as we can and then follow up with all the, um, the other infrastructure and be prepared for the grand opening.
And I agree that the, the children should be able to play on the playground as soon as it's finished. I agree with that. But I don't see the importance of rushing our grand opening. I think that that should be something very special when it's complete. I don't, I don't see that there's a problem with postponing it so that we can have a really nice grand opening. Why do we have to do some July 2nd? Why does that have to be the date since we're kind of, you know, moving towards that date right now? And I don't see anything being constructed yet. I just don't feel, in my opinion, it's going to be done. And I don't see why there's an issue to move the date so that we can have this big, special grand opening. I mean, what's the problem with that? I, I don't see a problem with that. I think we should honor all of the people, the staff, the friends, anyone in the community who's had involvement, the donors. We need to honor everyone. There are people from our state, state representatives, our governor. They've all expressed interest in coming to this event. And so if we push it and it's just partially complete, that, that's just not good in, in my mind.
Is there any other discussion?
So are we going to vote on this? Or do we need to defer it so that we can vote? Because this is just for discussion tonight. So do we need to make a motion to defer it for a vote? Or how do we do this?
You can make a motion tonight to call it to a vote.
Then that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to make a motion to call it to a vote. I suspect that we'll have the whole board here at the next meeting. So.
Are you, are you making a motion for it to be voted on tonight?
No. I'd like to defer it to the next meeting to be voted on.
So, Mayor, Commissioners, in that instance, there would be no, there would be no vote to defer because there's no action formally to defer. What you can ask is it, it be considered as an, an action item on the agenda for June 16? And we would have that on there. If, if it's an effort to, to vote to do that thing, that'd be the formal.
Okay. That's what I would like to do.
Is there a motion to call it to a vote tonight?
There's a motion to call it to a vote at the next
No, no, no. There's other commissioners here that might want to make a motion to call it to a vote tonight. That's, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I've already expressed my, my desire to, as a motion.
To defer it. You've expressed your desire to defer it to the next meeting. Correct?
So do I need to remove my motion if someone else wants to make a different motion?
Mayor and members of the commission, there is no motion on the floor.
Correct.
There are two opportunities, or three. Opportunity one is the staff understands the intent of this discussion and we can simply add this to the June 16 agenda for an action item to, to extend the grand opening. The board can formally vote to request to add this to the agenda to June 16. I would argue that's not necessary. We'll have that on the, on the agenda for you. Or number three, you can offer a motion to extend the date tonight, if, if you still choose.
I would like to offer a motion to move it for a vote at our next board meeting.
So you're deferring, so there's no motion required for that?
In that instance, there would be no motion required. We would simply add
Okay. Then I would like to ask that it be deferred to the next meeting.
Absolutely. We'll have it on the agenda as an action item for you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 12, Communications for the Mayor and Commissioners. Vice Mayor?
I would just like to say, we've got a lot of really cool people that are moving into our community. And I hear a lot of how, you know, them talking about how wonderful they've been treated and welcoming that our community is. And that makes me very happy. And also, I'd like to say, let's just help to keep our community clean by picking up the trash and not throwing it out. I've seen several people who are taking the initiative to get out and pick out trash, pick up trash on their own without us having an actual cleanup day. So that makes me very happy and I want to thank them. And that's all I have tonight.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank all of the, the folks that I was able to get out and talk with. It was absolutely wonderful to get out and, and to talk about their opinion, how they feel with, with what the commission is doing, what they want to see done in the city of Fairview. And it was, it was great. And I think it, it reminds me, we need to do that as elected officials more often. Get out and just see what the, the constituents truly want. And, and I just appreciate everybody that I talked with, with, with giving me their opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nothing to nightmare.
And I have nothing. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.